Started. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, July 15th, meeting of the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners. Will everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will make notice that the board met in executive session prior to this meeting, everyone you see present, to discuss human resources matters and legal matters. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull off of this evening's consent agenda?
I have some. Anybody else first?
Please.
Vowels accepting A.
Excuse me?
E and I.
E and I. And I am pulling item C and item K. Anyone else? And also I'll make notice that item G is being removed from the consent agenda.
Removed altogether.
Altogether?
Yes.
Okay. So we will not be considering item G. May I get a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item C-E-I-C-E-G, which has been pulled, I and K? I need a second, gentlemen. All those in favor of the consent agenda minus items C-E-I and K and G, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to nothing with Commissioner Clark absent. Item C. So I pulled that. I just wanted to make note, so these are our monthly reports that we get from our staff, and I don't know if anyone had the chance to read them, if anyone reads them, but in the report by our police department, I just wanted to make notice of the wonderful community outreach that our police are doing. They have some really excellent and outstanding programs, and I just wanted to take a moment to recognize all your hard work. I think it's really excellent for the community. So Lieutenant Pinto, who is here tonight for Chief Lanigan, thank you, and thank your staff. So we really appreciate that. May I get a motion to approve item C?
So move. Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to nothing. Item E, Commissioner Booker.
Item E is Resolution 2019-72 authorizing the execution of a grant application to DCED for a greenways, trails, and recreation program for the Radnor Trail Extension Project. I wanted to review this item as my understanding is that this trail has not been approved by the school board. Is this, so do we have everyone on board with this, or are we moving forward without the approval?
This trail-
Wait, I wasn't asking you, though.
Hold on a moment. John has really been taking the heat on the trail, so John, Mr. Nocini, I'm going to let him know.
I've personally made several of the school board members aware of this, but it does not affect the school district property.
It's not the same trail, Rich.
This is only the P&amp;W right-of-way, which goes adjacent to Martha Brown's Woods.
Mr. Nocini, do you want to clarify for us?
Commissioner Nagel is correct. As a matter of fact, at a meeting some time ago with the township manager and the superintendent of schools and their facilities director, the question head came up exactly about this, and I explained to them, this does not affect their property. It's all within the P&amp;W, the old P&amp;W right-of-way. There's no need for anything from the school district for what is proposed. It's outside of that scope.
Isn't that school district property?
No. This is, PennDOT owns that right-of-way, and we have the lease for whatever, 100 years. It's not their property. It's the PennDOT-P&amp;W trail right-of-way.
So review the scope of this project here that's being requested for approval.
So if everybody's familiar with the existing Radnor Trail, this is an extension of that trail, basically, that will take you to the blue route right-of-way, the Route SR476 right-of-way. Similar trail as to what's on the other side. Campbell Thomas has done some very good work to eliminate the need for a culvert, which would have been very expensive and problematic during construction, to come up with an at-grade crossing, which makes sense and eases the cost of the project as well as the construction. It will be a very similar trail to what is on the other side. It is truly just an extension. It is all within the PennDOT right-of-way, the trail right-of-way, the old railroad track right-of-way. Doesn't affect the school whatsoever.
What does it connect to? Is it just a new endpoint?
Correct. It will end at the SR476 right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Booker, do you want to make a motion to approve?
No, thank you.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve item E? All those in favor of item E, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Commissioner Booker, how did you vote?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes five to one, with Commissioner Clark absent. Item, aye. Commissioner Booker.
Item I, Resolution 2019-68 authorizing Turner Land Surveying to provide a boundary survey and stakeout of Ode recio Park for 9100. Why are we doing a Ode recio boundary survey and staking out?
I'll answer before Steve can follow up. There is a question regards to who owns the property. There is a strip of land that is owned by the township. There's also quite a bit of property owned by the school board, and to make sure we have a clear picture based on images and that we don't have a clear-cut boundaries of where these are located, so.
Why does it need to be determined at this point? So what's-
Well, who would be responsible? There is no agreement between the township and the school district over maintenance of that particular area like we do, North Wayne, Emlin Towne. So we would want to determine what that is, and it may determine who makes improvements upon such property.
So this is a maintenance issue? We want to determine who has the responsibility for maintenance, or is there plans for this area that we need to identify the ownership?
At some point here in the near future, that the park would follow a upgrade is what's currently being done in different areas in the township that this one is in line for improvement, so it would be a good idea to know who owns what within there, and that we don't run into issues like we've had at Emlin Towne where the property lines are, and then approvals as well for public improvements.
I'm still, absolutely have no idea why we're doing this. So we need to get the boundary survey, and what do we anticipate is going to happen in this area that we're identifying the boundaries for?
You have parking lots, you have playground equipment, you have a basketball court that's there, you have a baseball field, stands, you have the whole park, which is in play here, so.
Commissioner Booker, the 2002 Cressa Report gave us this aerial showing what the township owns, which I think is counterintuitive to what everybody believed the township owns. It's a narrow strip of some parking and all the woods, and all the athletic area and athletic, active recreation mostly falls under the school district. So for capital projects, we also got money dedicated from Subergian for his project for improvements to this park. So before we make those improvements, I think it would be wise to know where our property is, and if those improvements aren't on township property or on school district property, and if any other agreement or anything has to be made to address that.
So the point with this is that the township does not plan on making improvements on property that is owned by the school district, and you need to discern exactly where the property line is in order to make that determination?
Whether the improvements go on the school district property will be a decision for the folks sitting up there, but we want to know where that line is, so that when we come to you with improvements, we can say, this does take into consideration school district ground or not, and maybe we have to talk to the school district.
And we're talking about building some playground equipment, et cetera?
We're talking about addressing the parking lot on a lower level, which constantly is graded completely the wrong way, which holds quite a bit of water and becomes a skating rink in the winter. You can see on the outline in the packet of what Cressa feels we own based on the deeds. We need to see where we stand before we start to do work on anything or even plan. Maybe it will involve the school district afterwards if we determine what we want to do is on their property.
But it's not a stormwater project currently on our list of 50-some, or is it?
No, sir, it is not.
Thank you.
Has there been any conversation with the school board about sharing costs of this item?
There has not, but we'd be more than happy to take that question to them.
Okay. Is there an urgency to pass this tonight without having that conversation with the school board?
There's not. There's not. The board would like to hold it. We would have that conversation and bring it back to you in August.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to table this. I mean, if we believe the majority of the property is school board-owned, they should be picking up the majority of the cost of this.
Oh, I think that we believe that it's township property, right, and then want to prove it, right?
What we wish to survey, what I requested the manager that I could survey, is what Cressa stated is township property. Like I say, it's counterintuitive. It does not include the ballfield. It includes some of the parking lot and may even bisect the playground. We don't know. But before you do any planning, it would be prudent, my recommendation is, it would be prudent to know what we own and what the school board owns, to then determine if there's cost sharing in a project.
Yeah, it sounds like it's for the township's benefit to do this.
Well, I think it benefits both sides to know who owns what, so I think this should be a shared cost.
So are you making a motion to table?
So move the table, this item, until we talk to the school board and get a determination whether they are interested in jointly moving forward, or they're going to require us to move forward on our own.
Is there a second on motion to table?
I'll second that.
Are we under a time restriction or any kind of time restraint if we talk to the school board?
All those in-
So we could put it in August, right, and they could still do the survey in-
Yes, sir. There's no immediate need.
Right.
Any other commissioner comment? All right, I will call the motion to table. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes five to one. Item K, Resolution 2019-71. So that's the payment to PennDOT for the master casting of the manholes for Newtown Road and Lancaster Avenue. I just wanted to pull this so that, Bob, I know that we had authorized you and staff to write a letter to PennDOT because you were unhappy with the plans that they put forth for Lancaster Avenue. I just wanted to find out what, if any, if there's been any resolution, and are they just moving forward, and what can we expect?
They are moving forward. They patted us on the shoulder and said, yeah, we'll look at it and see what we'll do. And it will be left up to their maintenance department to make any of the corrections to the curbs, sub-basin drainage issues, multitude of issues. We did respond back, and using the state code what PennDOT operates off of, we advised them as to our interpretation of the reading of that, which put a lot of the obligations back on PennDOT and not on the local municipality. They felt the local municipality was responsible for the curbs, sidewalks, which is not accurate. Contracts have been awarded for Newtown and Lancaster Avenue, but I know Steve has called, Steve McNeilis has called, and PennDOT has not heard from their contractors when they plan to start.
So we don't have a start date, at least for Newtown Road?
The clock is ticking here of when this work needs to be done, because-
Because the contracts have been awarded.
They have, but also too, by mid-November, if they're not complete, most of the plants start to shut down. So we would not want to have a project where half the road is milled and then we have to deal with that, which I believe, North Wayne Avenue was a major issue where the road was milled, and only under the direction of this board we got them to put a scratch code down to make it drivable.
So if they don't make the time deadline, they have to switch from hot mix asphalt to warm mix asphalt, and I don't know if they're prepared to do that, but from what we found out and the manager has noted, I don't think anything would occur before fall.
They need to get Newtown Road repaved, I guess.
There are also issues that need to be corrected. The inappropriate base has been put down. Anybody who's driven on Lancaster, where they have been doing utility work, the compaction has been poor at best on that, so that's going to have to be corrected, and I know Steve has been on that, but before any type of milling and paving, they are going to have to correct that.
Well, thank you all for being on top of this and doing what you can to make sure that the repaving is done properly. I know there are a lot of people that have reached out to me and talked to me about the prior repaving of Newtown Road, and how that was not good, and how it did not last. Forget the utility work that has been done there. So many people aren't happy about that, but you know, Newtown and Lancaster are not roads that are within our purview, but thank you so much for working to stay on top of this and try to get the best job possible, so we appreciate that. So I will go ahead and make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-71. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Abel off the dais and Commissioner Clark absent. All right, we will move into public participation. Good evening and welcome.
Thanks. Thank you. Good evening. Good evening. My name is Patty Barker. I live at 920 Lewis Lane in the Garrett Hill section of Rosemont. I'm the former chair of the Garrett Hill Coalition. I'm here tonight to respectfully request that the board vote yes on agenda item number 5A. Please authorize John Rice to attend the zoning hearing board and oppose appeal number, appeal number 3045. I came before you on May 20th to alert you to this matter. I wrote to you on June 10th about the same issue. Each time, I asked for your support. There's a duplex being built at 131-133 Garrett Avenue. It's almost completed at this point. Although David J. Brasso, the builder, met with community members at his initiation, I might add, in 2015 and 2016, he understood the zoning ordinances and he submitted a plan to the community that was in compliance with Radnor Township zoning. This plan you see right here, with pertinent zoning regulations printed on the plan, right here. Although he knew all this, he chose to build a structure that is out of compliance with the Radnor Township zoning code, specifically as it relates to zoning in Garrett Hill. This next plan I'm going to show you. Some of you will remember the two-and-a-half-year process that resulted in the Garrett Hill zoning district ordinances. They were approved by the Board of Commissioners and made part of Radnor Township zoning law in October of 2009. The community rose up in 2007, stormed the township building literally, to ensure that Garrett Hillians be involved in the rezoning process. We wanted to craft zoning laws that would make sure any future development would preserve the existing pattern of development and reflect our community values, and we did. It was an unprecedented effort in the history of Radnor Township. It involved the appointment of Garrett Hill residents to a Garrett Hill Steering Committee, who worked with the community, a planner, an architect, and township staff to develop the Garrett Hill zoning district ordinances. A group of concerned community members has been in communication with township staff about the Garrett Avenue duplex, insisting that Mr. Brasso bring the building into full compliance. So far, to no avail. Bob Zankowski has continually reiterated that Mr. Brasso will not receive a certificate of occupancy and that the township expects full compliance. A zoning enforcement notice was served to Mr. Brasso on June 6th. He had 30 days to appeal or bring the building into full compliance. He filed that appeal on July 2nd. His appeal will be heard by the zoning hearing board on August 29th. Mr. Brasso is claiming a hardship in this case. Jim Cannilio, a lawyer who served on the Garrett Hill Steering Committee, sent an email stating, "This is a self-imposed hardship that Brasso created, not a permit issuing mistake where he was an innocent victim who relied upon the expertise of whoever issued the permit. He should not be allowed to ignore the law by paying a few thousand dollars. The entire Garrett Hill community worked hard for two-and-a-half years to get the Garrett Hill zoning district ordinances passed, and this is a slap in the face to the rule of law and every one of us." It seems that Mr. Brasso's violations of Radnor Township zoning ordinances are flagrant and disingenuous. He appears to be thumbing his nose at the township officials and the community. Mr. Brasso understood the zoning laws as far back as 2015, yet he pled ignorance when questioned by township staff. I would ask Mr. Brasso to bring the building into compliance. Instead of spending thousands of dollars fighting the township, why not spend that money rectifying the issues? I'd like to read a short paragraph. Both the 2008 Garrett Hill Master Plan and the 2003 Radnor Township Comprehensive Plan speak to the uniqueness of Garrett Hill, and I quote, "Garrett Hill is a wonderful community. The neighborhood's vibrancy and resiliency are rarely seen and experienced. These qualities make Garrett Hill unique and worthy of special consideration to preserve it. The Master Plan focuses on strategic policy changes and capital investments needed to preserve the exceptional community resources of Garrett Hill far into the future. In closing, I again respectfully request that the board vote yes and authorize John Rice to attend the August 29th zoning hearing board and oppose appeal number 3045. I thank you so much for listening, and I thank you for your service to Radnor Township."
Patty, are you going to stay for the presentation on this? Are you going to again speak, or this is the only time you're going to speak?
This is the only time I'll speak unless you have questions you want to ask me at the time.
Well, you have an email that says that, you said in the email, as I recall, that this is not a case where you're relying on the professionals or the permit. Why did you say that? Why did that email say that?
Commissioner Booker, we're going to have, so we're going to have, we're going to have a vote on whether or not, and I think we could ask those questions when we-
Well, she says she's not going to speak again when we go-
Well, I wasn't planning to, but I can certainly get up and answer any questions at the time.
See, so Patty, if we have questions during the vote, you-
Yeah, I just wanted to get this on the record before you had your conversation to sort of get a jump on it.
And there will be public comment during our vote as well, so.
Yes.
But thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Patty.
Good evening. Roberta Winters, 326 Williams Road. Change is inevitable. Plan change, particularly in the area of land development, is imperative. The League of Women Voters of Radnor Township has worked for decades to monitor and take action when appropriate in the area of land use. As president of the League, I am speaking on their behalf and appreciate the opportunity to come before you. This evening, we are specifically addressing a matter regarding zoning and planning. Further, we have a related position regarding local government that speaks to openness of governmental proceedings as well as high standards of professionalism and individual accountability. As you may know, in October of 2009, the Board of Commissioners approved the Garrett Hill zoning district after an unprecedented two-and-a-half years of community involvement and planning. The rules are in keeping with the need to preserve this unique neighborhood. Among other issues, height restrictions, building width, and setbacks were deemed critical to maintain the character of Garrett Hill. The League is concerned about the new construction at 131 through 133 Garrett Avenue for the following reasons. It is an apparent bait and switch. The developer presented plans to members of the community in 2015. As a result of feedback, an appropriately modified and compliant plan was submitted in 2016. It was stamped by staff in both Radnor Township and Delaware County in 2017 and 18 respectively. The building that now stands was not built to the approved plan. How would you feel if a non-compliant property was constructed beside your home? What would you expect your elected and appointed officials to do? It reinforces the notion, on another point, that it is better to apologize than to ask permission. In spite of several informal, informal requests to lower the roof, the builder submitted inadequate plans to do so. While stop-work orders were briefly issued, the builder was allowed to continue in hopes that full compliance would result. Is Radnor's reputation such that if you apologize, plead ignorance, or pay a fine, you can break the rules? Is this part of a transparent process involving impacted residents, or are such deals brokered behind closed doors? It serves an example, on a third point, of see no evil, hear no evil, speak no evil. If the township cannot provide staff with the time and/or proficiency to adequately review plans and monitor their implementation, enforcement is not going to happen. Beyond vigilant neighbors who repeatedly raise the issue, who is responsible and accountable? Are budget cuts that limit staff shortchanging our community, that needs boots on the ground instead of off-site and out-of-site consultants and contractors who don't know the territory? Who has the long-term interests of residents in their hearts and minds? The League of Women Voters believes that 131-133 Garrett Avenue is not an example of good government. We believe ordinances are to be followed. Development should comply with approved plans. Township staff and elected officials need to be accountable for monitoring and enforcing rules. The Commissioners have a responsibility to take a strong stand to resolve this matter in a way that's consistent with the community's values as embodied in the zoning of Garrett Hill overlay district. The League of Women Voters is optimistic that justice will prevail, and everyone will learn from and not repeat this unfortunate experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment? Good evening.
Sarah Pillings from Garrett Hill, Ready for 100.
And Robin Mann from Garrett Hill.
On the 25th of February 2019, the Board of Commissioners adopted the resolution for Ready for 100, and we have now, the township has now received a lovely citation. I went to a meeting in Montgomery County where they have 10 communities that have adopted this, and they're going to work together. So we're working on ours, but we wanted to give this to you to thank the township for the Ready for 100 program.
Very nice.
Yes.
Very nice. I think this belongs to staff as well. I'm going to hang this here. All right. I'll just prop it up here. Everyone can see it. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Tim Fry. I live on Williams Road in Garrett Hill. Prepared a written statement this evening because frankly, I'm a little bit sleep deprived from the birth of objectively the most beautiful baby girl in the whole wide world. And I wanted to make sure that what I say means, I say what I mean, and that I avoid ambiguity if possible. My wife and I chose to buy a house in Garrett Hill. We closed on that home four years ago this very day. We bought a house that was in serious disrepair because we wanted it to be in Radnor, and because we love the charm and character of Garrett Hill. It is a community of true neighbors, and even though, even though 20 years from now, we will still be considered newcomers, we have been welcomed, that's part of that community from the start, no more evident than this week, and how our neighbors have responded and celebrated the birth of our daughter with us. The duplex being constructed at 131-133 Garrett Ave directly challenges the authority of this township's ordinances and threatens the very charm and character which exists in Garrett Hill and which continue to draw more young families like mine. We have already heard it this evening, but I can't tell you how many times over the past few months that neighbors have recounted the story of how the Garrett Hill zoning district came to be. The countless hours of neighbors spent in meetings and mobilizing the community, all to preserve the values, the character, and the diversity cherished in our neighborhood. The duplex as built directly contradicts the code, and if allowed, it will serve as a slap in the face to my neighbors and to all Garrett Hillians who value what we have in our neighborhood. More so, this building would open the door for others to disregard the Garrett Hill zoning ordinance. I'm not a landlord or a property investor like others who have bought in Garrett Hill, but I can understand how allowing this building as is, or merely assessing it a pay-to-play fine, as I've been told, some have suggested, will lead to the gentrification of Garrett Hill and the loss of that charm and character the zoning ordinance was designed to preserve. and the loss of that charm and character the zoning ordinance was designed to preserve. Patty has laid out the facts. The developer knew he was altering the designs in violation of the code. It should have been caught. It wasn't. But it must not be allowed now. I try to call things as I see them. When I believe it's time to reach a resolution, I say that. Well, this is the time to fight. I believe that the equities favor enforcement of the code under these circumstances. The first step is authorizing the solicitor to attend the zoning hearing board. But the fight doesn't stop here. Preserving Garrett Hill for our children will require seeing this fight through to the end. Vigilant oversight to ensure that it doesn't happen again, and taking the steps now to avoid other foreseeable risks to our neighborhood, like finally addressing the fact that the school board, and not the township, owns and ultimately controls the future of Emmentone now. We need this board to act now, but we also need the board to work with us as we move forward. The future of Garrett Hill is very bright. But we don't get there by abandoning the great work done in the past, and we don't get to tomorrow without doing the work today. I implore the board, please vote for Garrett Hill by voting to authorize the solicitor to attend the hearing on the 131-133 Garrett Ave development and be there for us moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations. Any other public comment this evening? You don't have to raise your hand. You can just come up.
Hi, my name is Vicki List. I live at 250 Beechwood Drive. Every time I drive by that house, it feels like it's coming at me. It is so obviously out of character with the whole neighborhood. I don't understand why we have zoning laws if we're not going to enforce them. And I would like to encourage you to vote to send our solicitor to enforce our laws.
Any other public comment? Good evening.
Hello. My name is David Brasso. I live at 1125 Robin Road in Gladwin. I have not had the pleasure of living on Garrett Avenue, but it seems like the neighbors are very impassioned, which I appreciate. I am the developer of this property, and I just want to point out a couple of things that are stated as fact, which are, in essence, not fact. They're misrepresentations of what actually happened. A lot of folks I heard are saying that it's a bait and switch. Things were done in a back-room setting, underhanded, things of that nature. I do agree with one thing, in that where we are today is not a good representation of good management by Radnor Township. Mistakes were made, right? Mistakes were made across the board. As a developer, I follow all the rules. I pay all the fees for reviews and reviews upon reviews, and they're expensive. So, I've invested probably $20,000 in having these plans drawn up and reviewed. I pay a certified architect that went to school for a long time, does tons of these plans, reviews tons of codes. They, in essence, were tasked with the job of building a building that adhered to the code. All the code: setbacks, building height, impervious coverage, you name it. They were supposed to hit the mark, okay? So, they came back with the design of a building, and they missed it. They made a mistake. It was an honest mistake. They misinterpreted the code. The code, as written in the Garrett Hill district, is very different from everywhere else in Radnor. Now, when I went back and asked them, "You guys do this all day, all the time. You've never made this mistake for me. I've been working with them for nine years. So, how did this happen?" And they pointed to, in essence, a fault in the actual website of Radnor Township. When you go into Radnor Township and you start researching the code for the building height in Garrett District, there's a link that says, you know, click on this, and it jumps you down to a portion of the code book, which in essence, isn't the Garrett Hill building height requirements, but is the building height requirements for everywhere other than Garrett Hill. The link says, "Click here to understand the Garrett Hill building heights." And when you click on it, it takes you to a different part of the code. That's a mistake in your website. Nobody knows about it, probably. I'm probably bringing this to your attention today. But my architect found it, and they retraced their steps, and they found out that's where they went off the tracks. They didn't intentionally try to, you know, bait and switch or build something out of compliance with the height. They were misled by a lot of things that they typically do every day. So, they read that portion of the code and they built a building height. And they submitted plans. They stamped them. They take their license very seriously. They have errors in admission insurance. They don't like making mistakes, especially when there's legal recourse involved. So, they stamped them and sent them to me. I paid them a lot of money for that. I then pay Radnor Township money to then also review it. You farm it out to Keystone. Keystone reviews it. They make the same mistake, the same innocent mistake that my architects made, the same mistake that everybody made. They reviewed it. They saw... If you look at my building plans, there are notes all over them of all kinds of things that they picked up. This thing, this drain, this minutia, very minor things that nobody in this room would have, you know, would care about. They marked it up. They went through it very thoroughly. So, they weren't... They didn't just gloss over it. They went through it with a fine-tooth comb, and they marked up all my building plans. They stamped them. They sent them back to me and said approved. I get approved building plans. I go to my bank. I say, "Mr. Banker, here's what, how much money I need, and here's what I'm going to build."
You have one minute left, sir.
Okay. My banker lends money based on that building, okay? That building has a third usable floor. It has a certain amount of square footage. Everyone who's in this room that understands real estate knows that square footage has a big impact on the value of the property. So, to lower the roof, as I've been asked, would create a problem for the bank, would create a problem for the sellability of the house, would create a problem for so many things for innocent mistakes. Nobody did a bait and switch. Nobody tried to circumvent the law. Nobody tried to... We all tried to comply with the code with everything from every step of the way. I met with the Garrett Hill Coalition. I did everything I was asked to do and then some. And it was an unfortunate mistake. That's where we are today. We cannot go backwards. So, basically, people need to know the facts. These are the facts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Jim Canelio, 135 Barclayton Road. I've listened. I was served on the Implementation Committee that came up with the zoning ordinance for Garrett Hill for two and a half years. And I've listened to the previous speakers who've addressed this issue. And it's my understanding, as Mr. Bossy noted, that mistakes were made by his architect, by Radnor Township in issuing the permit. But there's one person who did make a mistake, who did not make a mistake, and that was Mr. Bossy. He was told unequivocally what the restrictions were for this lot. The record plan which he submitted to the township has all the restrictions. And I'm looking at it. It says, "Building height, 30 feet." So, he knew that the restriction was 30 feet. And now, he's blaming his architect. He's blaming the township for issuing the permit. Well, he knew that it was 30 feet. So, I don't know what... I'm not a zoning lawyer, but, you know, this is not a mutual mistake made by Mr. Bossy and the township. This was a unilateral mistake that was just made by the township. He knew. He sat there and submitted plans, knowing that they were out of code because he was told by various members of the community, he submitted plans that indicated the building height was 30 feet. So, there's... I don't see how I would ask the board to vote yes to send Mr. Rice to the zoning appeal board meeting at the end of next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Good evening.
My name's Andrew Tillman, 854 Conestoga Road. I live in the overlay district. I went through all the meetings. I'm looking at this as... I'm in the middle because I feel for the developer and I feel for the township. But when I look at it and a mistake was made, I say, "If you look at that structure and you look at the building next to it, what is it, this much? We're talking 45 feet. Actually, they're talking 30 feet. I'm 35 feet, and I'm still upset over that height. I'm still upset that, why are we 35 feet? The only real estate in Radnor Township to be 35 feet in, and that's in the Garrett Hill business district. He's 30 feet up in the Garrett Hill neighborhood district, and everybody else, by right, can build 45 feet. Yet, everybody thinks we're building skyscrapers. This guy's trying to develop. Boo-boos were made, maybe on both sides. That's not for me to decide. I'm just telling you what I see. And from what I see, is you should let him build because the next guy that tears down and builds, it's going to make Garrett Hill that much nicer because you're going to see new structures. You might see less college students because they built a newer home, right? And I'm not saying, I'm not saying the developer's right or wrong. I'm not saying the township's right or wrong. He's wrong in the way the law's wrote. But there's so many laws in Garrett Hill overlay district that you guys don't even know the law. We all don't know the law unless you go back to the book, and the book, "Well, Radnor Township says this." I'm like, "Whoa, whoa, whoa. You better get to Garrett Hill because that's a whole nother township." We are our own township. We have our own zoning. Nobody else can compete to us. We are the only property, we're the only real estate that has maximum lot lease, where we're not allowed to buy our neighbor's property because we'd be too wide. But you go to Wayne, huh, so you can build whatever you want. Garrett Hill is a small town. I get what the community wanted to do. But I don't think they went about it that way when the whole idea of constructing this idea of a Wayne, it didn't work. We're lucky we have sidewalks that you can walk down. Forget the herringbone and the streetlights and the trashcans and the trees. We're talking about developing Garrett Hill. Garrett Hill's never, ever going to be developed unless you get guys like this to come in and start taking some of these older homes down, putting newer homes up, raising the tax base, you know? But by you limiting the height restrictions of Garrett Hill, that's a damper on me. I'd love to build 45 feet. I'd love to build 100 feet. But to tell me that I can only build 35 feet on my real estate, I'm... What was... Oh, we go back to... Let's go back to what the master plan of Radnor Township was for all the businesses in Radnor Township, was to preserve the business districts of the township. And you want to know something? You didn't do it in Garrett Hill. You popped everything. You took outside dining out. You took all the things, okay? It was great. It was great to protect the community.
Sorry, sir. You have a minute left.
What's that?
You have one minute left. I'm sorry.
Okay. I didn't know. I was limited, but...
The comments come in at five minutes.
That is how I feel. I feel that the mistakes were made here. If you look at that property, to the house that sits next to it, it doesn't detract from anything. It's just another home. It really is just another home. And you know what? I'd love to build 45 feet by right. So, thank you for letting me say my piece. Good night.
Good night. Thank you very much. Is there any additional public comment? All right, we will move on. Announcements of boards and commission vacancies. Do you want to take that? Board of Health, you know.
So, we still have vacancies on a couple of different boards and commissions, and we're hoping that people will come out and apply for them. We have five vacancies still on Carfac, which is the Citizens Audit Review and Financial Advisory Committee. One vacancy on the Code Appeals Board, which requires either a master electrician, master plumber, or general contractor. One vacancy on the Rental Housing Appeals Board. One vacancy on the Shade Tree Commission for an unexpired term ending on December 31st of this year. Four vacancies on the Swim Act Committee, and one vacancy on the zoning hearing board.
Thank you, Commissioner Larkin. And we do not have any appointments this evening, so we will skip item four and move on to committee reports. Item A, motion to authorize John Rice to attend the zoning hearing board meeting and oppose the following. Appeal Number 3045, the appellant, JDB Properties, 131-133 Garrett Avenue, appealing the zoning officer's enforcement notice dated June 6th, 2019, regarding a structure that exceeds the maximum allowable building height. So, I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All right. Is there any commissioner discussion on this item? Or Mr. Kachansky, do you want to speak?
I can just add a few things. I'll be brief since we heard the basis for why this item's on the agenda. There was an enforcement notice issued to the applicant, the property owner, Mr. Brasso, regarding this issue. When it came to light that there was an issue, the applicant had two courses of action: correct it or file an appeal. So, they did file an appeal within the requirements of the 30-day limitation for that. So, the request was asked to send the solicitor to support the township in denying this appeal.
All right. Thank you. Is there any commissioner comment to the motion on the floor?
Well, I want to go back to my original question. So, and this can be answered, I guess, by Kevin or Bob or John. It sounds to me as if there was an original plan from 2015 or '16 presented by the builder. Subsequently, prior to applying for a building permit, he was told that he could have a building that was bigger than that, and he relied on that architect to do that. Is that correct, or is that not the case?
I'm sorry, sir. He's asking the staff.
Actually, I'm supporting you, actually, but whatever.
So, and remember that we are not, we're not trying this case. What is before us?
We don't know what Mr. Brasso relied upon, other than what he said.
Well, all right, okay.
So, to ask us what he relied on, any of the staff, is not appropriate. The facts are pretty clear here. He said that he relied on the architect who made a mistake. His architect made a mistake. We also heard that the 30-foot height limit is on the record plan, which it is. So, there's some facts that have to get developed. We also know the township issued a permit for the larger building, about six feet two tall. I mean, there's other issues that will have to be developed in front of the zoning hearing board, but I don't intend to litigate this case tonight. You know, you certainly can, we could discuss this outside of this meeting. You could vote against this. You could vote for it, however you want to do it, whatever your reasons are. But if it's going to the zoning hearing board, I don't see any good reason to have a discussion about the facts, you know, what our goal is, what the strategy is. Mr. Brasso said what he said. You heard him, that he relied on his architect.
Okay, so, we disagree on this element. To me, it's very important to understand, in order to take this vote, I need to understand the underlying facts as interpreted by both sides. So, we disagree... So, we disagree on this, John. So, what I heard, and I asked Patty Barker the same question. Patty Barker is contending. She said she had an email that... And then also, Mr. Canilia, I believe, said that the developer knowingly submitted these plans. I heard the developer say, irrespective of what he knew before, the architect said he could do something else, and that's what he did. And I understand that those are facts that need to be developed, but I need to have any other information supporting either side of that that hasn't been presented. And my question is, is there any other information that could support either interpretation? Or is it just what they say one and then the other person says? So...there's no other information, some people are saying...all right, that's fine. Now, the second question is, the township had their person review the plan and approve the plan. Is that correct?
Township reviewed the building plans and issued a permit.
And we issued the permit. Did Mr. Kachansky review the work of the outside contractor before the plan was issued?
Don't know.
What would be a possible resolution to this other than demolishing or rebuilding the structure? Is there anything else that can be done? So, is there only, the resolution is either it stays?
It could be lowered six feet.
Or it could be lowered?
Right.
Is there any other alternative that we could come to?
Not that I'm aware of. That'd be more of an issue of the zoning hearing board. We don't get to make a determination. This is going to the zoning hearing board one way. He's filed an appeal, so...facts have to be presented to the zoning hearing board. I'm sure Mr. Brasso will testify in front of the zoning hearing board. The residents can testify in front of the zoning hearing board. They can become parties. There may be some facts out there that we don't know about tonight. But until the board authorizes us to get involved in this, in the appeal, I really don't think it's appropriate to discuss any of this.
Yeah, that's the exact motion that's on the floor. We are not trying this case ourselves. It's not, that is not what is before us.
I'm not trying to litigate the case. I'm trying to understand the facts, the underlying facts under which we...I'm trying to discern what the conflict is so that I can determine whether we should pursue this or not. And I can't even determine exactly what the facts are. It seems to me that irrespective of what was presented in 2015, if a developer presents a plan and relies in good faith on professionals both hired by him and in the township, it seems to me a very difficult position for the township to now say we should reverse that after the township approved it and without a showing of bad faith. So, I'm looking for a showing of bad faith here in order to support the people from Garrett Hill who've come out. Right, so, I want to support the neighbors and Tim Fry. But in order to do that, we need to say the township is in the right. I'm trying to figure out exactly if, is there a case that we can pursue or not. So, that's not litigating the case, it's trying to understand the facts.
Well, I don't think that we should be the jury here. What I first would like to say is, just to move on with this. I would like to thank all the residents that came out from Garrett Hill. I know that this is a hot-button issue on both sides, but the passion amongst the neighbors trying to preserve the community, I think, is important. I will be voting to send the solicitor tonight. I've heard enough from the residents, from emails, from correspondence, from phone calls. And I think, to a certain extent, it will be an uphill battle. I've made that very clear to the people that I have spoken to. But it's a necessity. And any fight worth fighting is something that you fight for. So, whether we are able to win it or to lose it, I think it's important for the residents and the members of the ward. Finally, I've always stood for residents over any kind of commercial issue, as well as institutional issue as well. So, anyone that, or anything that disturbs directly the quality of life in our neighborhoods is something that we should look at. And I would ask my fellow colleagues to vote to send the solicitor as well.
And I appreciate that, I understand. But I'm asking you then, Sean, shouldn't we find some element of bad faith here in order to proceed? Or do we not need to find that? In other words, if somebody is making a good faith effort and running their business like you do and I do, in order for us to impede them, the government to impede them, shouldn't we have some evidence of bad faith?
I don't think it's for us to decide right now. I've heard from 10 people. I don't know if you've gotten the emails from me, but I'm happy to share them with you. I don't want to say anything bad about Mr. Brasso, but, you know, it's going to be a he said, she said. And I think that it's best that we let zoning hear it. And if something can happen in between, John, or it can get worked out in between, he wants to lower it or there's some kind of remediation that makes everybody happy, that we should look at. But for now, I would certainly take the neighbors' concerns and the residents' and the taxpayers' concerns paramount.
And I agree with you completely. As a matter of fact, zoning will hear this. The issue that we're being asked to determine is whether we should get involved and put our thumb on the scale for the zoning hearing board. And I'm happy to let zoning hear, they're going to hear it. And we need not be involved at this point, honestly. So, that's why I'm struggling with this because in order for me to put the finger on the scale against a businessman, I, and I've asked for it to develop, I've read the emails, I've heard the statements. I'm looking for something that we can show that gives me comfort in taking action to impede somebody, a businessperson acting. If they're not, I need to get comfortable that they're not acting in good faith and trying to run their business. And I haven't heard that. So, if anybody can give me that, then I'm looking for it.
Well, I've heard both sides. So, I think it's best that you have either a quasi-judicial board hear it or if it gets kicked to media, then you have a judge hear it.
Again, but that's fine, but should we put our finger on the scale for that quasi-judicial?
Commissioner Booker, you may be looking for an answer that nobody has at this moment. But what is before us is the idea of whether or not we send the solicitor to the zoning hearing board to fight this. As Mr. Rice said, you may vote for it or you may vote against it. But I think at this point, the question that you're asking, there is no answer at this point. And some of that information might have to come out of sending the solicitor to find this information. So, unless you have something else, I think, that's going to continue or move this conversation forward, I'm going to ask if Commissioner Abel or Commissioner Nagel have anything that they'd like to add or say. And if then, I'm going to kick it to staff and then back to public comment so that we may move on on this issue. Because I feel like you're just saying the same thing and there is no answer.
Well, my question to you is, do you understand my point?
I absolutely understand your point. And I'm saying that I don't think there's an answer.
We are going, it's going to go to that quasi-judicial body. We need not be involved at all. The question is, should we get involved? And this board is asking, and the people are asking me to get involved when I don't need to. So, I want to get comfortable.
So, maybe we could, other people could ask some questions. We can kick it to staff. We can also ask for public comment, and maybe that will come out. But we need to move this conversation forward.
Rich, no one can speak for how you want to vote. I'm going to vote for the residents. You can choose how you want.
I know I can choose how I want. Again, again.
Commissioner Nagel has something he'd like to say.
I just want to make sure you guys understand. Commissioners understand my point here.
We completely understand what you're saying.
Because quasi-judicial will happen with or without us.
We understand that, thank you. Commissioner Nagel.
Well, I intend to support this because we started eight, 10 years ago sending the solicitor to zoning meetings when we felt there was a need to support the community. And that's what this is about, is supporting the community and also to support our zoning ordinances. So, we have sent Mr. Rice and his office quite a number of times in the last 10 years. And we, it's not putting a finger on the scale. It's just one additional input for the zoning board that we'll find as they so choose.
Hence, putting a finger on the scale.
I'm also going to support sending Solicitor Rice to the zoning hearing board because I think protecting the zoning ordinance in that neighborhood is important. I think that 30-foot restriction is important for the integrity of that neighborhood. That being said, you know, based on what I've heard tonight, I don't know that the developer acted in bad faith. I think if he would have been approved at 30 feet, he would have built at 30 feet. It's not the case, and, you know, I'm happy to let the zoning hearing board decide that. The other thing, getting to Commissioner Booker's point, is I think his questions are valid because there's a cost involved with sending our solicitor to the zoning hearing board and possibly elsewhere once that is decided. So, being comfortable, I think, is important because, you know, we're looking at probably several thousand dollars of taxpayer dollars going towards sending the solicitor. But at this point, I think it is important to send for the Garrett Hill neighborhood and protecting that ordinance that's in place.
Is there any other commissioner comment?
All right, and I too will be, I will be voting to approve to send the solicitor. I believe that there are still more facts that need to be discovered. I don't think that's for us to decide. I think that if there are additional, there's additional information, information that can be pulled together in a cohesive way. And as Commissioner Nagel said, another option for the zoning hearing board to consider. I think that we owe it to the neighbors and to overall support our zoning, whether it's in Garrett Hill or in Wayne or in Newtown Square. I think that we need to stand up for our zoning laws, and so I'll be supporting this as well.
So, I will now ask staff if you have any comment to the motion on the floor.
Yes, Madam President, if I may. Just on a few items here. If I could stand and applaud Mr. Brasso's performance, then I would do that. Because I think that it was quite interesting of how the website is now at fault because we couldn't access the website, but you did have the code. And you knew what the regulations were, so that's false. I think it made it also very clear
Point of order, though.
That it was about, it was about money. Well, I think what's happened is when the gentleman stands up here and speaks, we're going to defend the township's position on this.
But he has five minutes to speak whatever he wants to say. We shouldn't be attacking residents in the crowd.
And Bob, there are links.
Gentlemen.
I think I'm entitled to the same consideration of the charter. So, but I guess to me is, we shouldn't say things or we shouldn't defend, or we bring up the issue of a couple thousand dollars that the township may spend in defending this code. But yet, when we have someone sues the township who sits up on the panel for almost $19,000, we don't even talk about it.
Mr. Zinkowski, can you please limit your comments to the motion that's on the floor, please?
I think I am.
Mr. Zinkowski, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
I find it quite interesting, the dialogue that we have to support and defend. I think that there are issues that are made that is not accurate, that is false. I think when people make innuendos that because Garrett Hill and that street is inferior than any other areas in the township is offensive. I won't stand here and let people run down neighborhoods and run down this township and not stand up for what the right thing is to do. But I guess we will do that. So, my opinion is the solicitor should go and represent. The solicitor has done that on many occasions to represent this township, and I'd ask the board to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any new or additional public comment that anyone would like to add? And this is specifically to the motion that is on the floor, please.
Correct. I actually just wanted to speak to you, Rich, with regard to your question. What I would consider bad faith would be the fact that Mr. Brasso initiated meetings with the community well in advance of his actually submitting his plans. He came in good faith, and we received him in good faith. And to be honest with you, I was very impressed with him that he reached out to us. I hadn't, that's never happened before. He presented himself as someone who wanted to conform to the Radnor Township zoning code. He knew that we had special rules in Garrett Hill, and he wanted to be a good neighbor. When he presented his first plan to us, we pointed out to him what was deficient, what didn't fit. He came back to us with a plan that did conform. And the community supported that and signed off on it in January of 2016. I reiterate, I was impressed with him. I thought he was a nice man. I thought, like I said, I was impressed. Then he fell off the face of the earth. I don't know what happened. The community began to ask, did he sell the property? What happened? Anyway, long story short, things fell between the cracks. Other things came along. So, all I'm saying is, when he presents it, that the architect made a mistake, that the website is poorly laid out, and I agree with him about that. It was the same architect, the same engineer, listed on the plan that he gave us that's on the plan that got approved. So, yes, mistakes were made on both sides. But to me, that was bad faith. He knew exactly what the zoning was. It was printed on the piece of paper that he submitted to us, that the community said, go for it, we love it.
Understood.
Thank you.
But don't you think that somebody, architect, maybe told him something different two years later? And he could have, fine, I'll take the latest...
That is possible, Rich, that is possible. But when you meet with the community who wrote the zoning, wouldn't you contact them and go, hey, just out of curiosity, did anything change in the last two years, four years? No, no, it didn't change. We worked our little tails off to get written what the community wanted. So, that's my point. That's the bad faith. And as I said to you, I was impressed with him. I thanked him for stepping forward to come into the community. Whoever does that? So, what happened? What happened? We supported him. And this is the thanks we get. Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment?
Thank you. I did approach the coalition, and my intent was in good faith, 100%, the whole way. You rely on people to do things the right way. Roof height is not a term like 12 feet is an inch. It's, roof height can be measured in many different ways in many different zoning codes. So, it's not a black and white thing that 12 feet equals an inch. Roof height means the average of the four corners measured to the delta between the peak of the roof and the lowest point of the, I mean, there's a million ways to calculate roof height. So, it's not super crystal clear in every case what roof height means. It's subject to interpretation. It's not an easy thing to figure out. And that's why mistakes were made. Because it's the Garrett Hill, the way they measure roof height is frankly different than anywhere else in Radnor and anywhere else I've ever encountered. So, I always intended to approach this with good faith, to improve the town of Garrett Hill, to build something that they'd be proud of, that I would be proud of. I think it's a beautiful structure. It's very well-architected. It's very well-built. The fact that I'm being looked at as the villain is amazing to me because I've only tried to come in and spend money in this town and enhance the value of this street by doing that building plus all the other things I'm required to do, to put up streetlights, to improve sidewalks, to all the things that I'm willing to do to make this a beautiful street and a beautiful building. So, the mention of bad faith is important. There was no bad faith. There never was. never was bad faith. There's never been bad faith. I have this project, I have many other projects. So do my architects. They got a lot of balls, a lot of plates spinning, and the mistake was made. What I find interesting is that nowhere in this whole discussion, from minute one, does Radnor ever look inward and admit that they made a mistake, that the people that I paid through Radnor to review the plan made the same mistake and issued a permit, and they issued it in good faith. And nobody here reviewed it and caught that. So I went through all the channels. I filed everything. I paid for everything. I followed all the rules. I did everything I was asked to and beyond. I met with people. I've done everything, everything I could do, everything a prudent individual and a prudent investor would do. And mistakes were made. And I, I sit here and accept my mistakes, but no one in Radnor will accept that they made a mistake. It's a two-way street. I submit, you review. They both said it's approved. So before you vote, I would, I would advise you to take a recess and go Google two terms, variance bias, variance by a stopple, and a vested rights argument. Because once a permit is issued, and I didn't do anything in bad faith, and I didn't try to fake anybody out or obscure anything, the plans are presented in black and white with measurements on them, and everybody missed them, then I have a right, that permit stands, I have a right to that permit. I did not intentionally screw up, okay? I'm just trying to invest money to not lose my ass on this and beautify the street, and everyone's aiming their arrows at me. Just accept the fact that the mistake was made. It was a duopoly of mistakes. But no one in Radnor has ever said, you know what? We apologize. You paid us money to review your plan, and we blew it, and we issued you a permit. And then only six months later do we come up with some frakka idea to lower a roof that's infeasible to do. It's infeasible. It can't be done. So just, I know you're going to vote, and I know you're going to send Mr. Rice to this thing. We're going to prevail anyway, because the law's on our side. But you're going to waste your money. And before you vote, look inside Radnor, right there, and accept the responsibility that you guys were part of this. You made the mistake too. Your agents made the mistake. Okay?
Absolutely. One question, though. What changed between what you showed to the neighbors and then, it's a different, different plan, so why did that change?
Because at that point, you're in land development, okay? Land, or zoning. Zoning is about the dirt, the water management, it's about setbacks.
This has nothing to do with the motion in front of us.
The height of the building is not even on the drawing at that point. The facade and all that, it's drawn on a napkin. You don't even invest the money at that point to have an architect draw it up. So we never pretended we were going to build one thing and then shimsy and it and build another thing.
Okay, all of this, all this information will be, is appropriate for the zoning hearing board. Is there any other public comment?
Just briefly, because I don't think there's any need to prolong this, but this is a matter that's not going to end here likely, and it's going to probably require this board's attention in the future. And so, Rich, you called me out by name, and so you and I have had some heated debates before, and I'd like to have a second here to just to try to persuade you.
I don't think we've had any heated debates, but please try to persuade me.
It is not, it's not your intention, you don't need to persuade anyone, but if you have public comment, continue the conversation, please. Please, please continue.
We just heard Mr. Brasso's representations about what he's trying to do with his building. I think it's a fair that he's trying to develop. That's fine. I'm for reasonable development. And that involves taking the properties that are there, especially in Garrett Hill, and taking the character of the building and going with it. But the matter that's before you right now is not a question of what he has done or what's going there. It's a matter of whether this board is going to, to seek to have its laws enforced. And so, look, strict constructionist, go look straight at the law, what the law says. If you or I ever went into court and said, Judge, I read the wrong section of a statute, imagine what the judge would say. So that's really where I'm going to leave it with. I think that this will be back, and I think we're going to need your support in the future. Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment this evening? All right, I'm going to call the vote.
Where's John? Is he, he's not going to vote?
John's right there. I'm not sure where, I'm not sure where Jack is.
Jack, Jack, where'd Jack go?
I do not know, but we have a quorum, so we're fine. I'm going to call the vote on the motion to authorize John Rice to send it to zoning hearing board and oppose the following appeal, the appeal number 3045. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Clark absent and Commissioner Larkin off of the dais.
[inaudible]
Okay. Item B, we are moving on to ordinance 2019-07, the adoption, authorizing the incurrence by the Township of Radnor of non electoral debt by the issuance of general obligation bonds, series, do you, gentlemen, do you mind? Series 2019 in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 13,000, or $13,700,000 for the following purposes. Series A, not to exceed 5 million of proceeds needed to refund the 2018 sewer improvement notes at 4.5 million plus capitalized closing costs and pricing flexibility. Series B, not to exceed 8.7 million of new money needed to fund general capital product, projects totaling 7.3 million plus capitalized closing costs and pricing flexibility. Mr. White.
Thank you. At first, I think it, it should be documented that no one clears out a room like I do.
[laughing]
Every time.
Wait, maybe we should, well, let's, uh, can we get, well, first, let's get a motion, and we'll put this on the floor.
Very good.
So can I get a motion to adopt ordinance 2019-07?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Now, Mr. White.
Yeah, so this discussion began back in April while the board was looking at a much larger list of capital projects, which totaled roughly 30 million. What came out of that meeting was that the board had interests, or had asked the administration to prepare a list of projects with the funding goals that the debt service on whatever we borrowed doesn't exceed the 2008 debt service expenses, and that priority be given to projects that are either in progress or had previous approvals with, and as evidenced by the trails and the pedestrian bridge, or projects that have some sort of time sensitivity, as any of those that are being offset to some extent with grants or other funding sources, or that enhance some sort of public safety, as evidenced by some of the sidewalks and infrastructure projects. That list was developed, the board met and reviewed the list at a special meeting in June, and then the following meeting at the June 24th, the board introduced the ordinances that are in question tonight. The township has engaged Cozen O'Connor as bond counsel, and Suzanne Mays is still here tonight to help answer any questions. We've also engaged PFM as our financial advisor. Dan Kozloff is here tonight, and we've engaged Banning and Scattergood as our underwriter, and Michael Wolf is here tonight to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. White. We certainly vetted this, I think, very well. And I want to thank you and your staff and Mr. Zinkowski and everyone who, Mr. Norsini, everyone who worked on putting together the list for us. We've had many, several meetings where we've vetted the list, where we've talked about ways to fund it, and this is certainly, I think, one of the best ways to go about that. So I am going to see if there's any commissioner comment before we move to final adoption.
I have a comment. Is PFM here?
My question is, what's the underwriter's discount, and could this have been cheaper for the township if we did a, an auction or a bid, a bid for the bonds instead of paying an underwriter to, to do an underwriting?
I'm Dan Kozloff from PFM, the township's financial advisor. The underwriter's discount is not set yet. That will be set when we come to market as a negotiation between the underwriter and the township with us as financial advisor assisting the township in that regard. In terms of, would it be cheaper to issue, I think what you're referencing, via a competitive sale process?
Competitive sale, yeah.
There will still be an underwriter's discount on a competitive sale process. Again, we don't know what that would be today. That would come out when you offer the bonds to the public and underwriters on the street bid on the bonds to purchase them. Could the township do better via a competitive sale process? I have no way of knowing that without going that path. The township has chosen to do a negotiated process with an underwriter to bring an independent financial advisor like PFM on board to make sure that the township gets the best deal that day in the market as offered by the selected underwriter.
Commissioner, just real quick, if I could just add to that. Some of the, some of the thought process in the, that we went through when this decision was made years ago was that by negotiating, there is some price, pricing flexibility. If the market's not cooperating on whatever it is that we are planned to sell, we can adjust quickly. That's a little bit more difficult when it's a pre-scheduled offering. And prior, in years ago, we did not have a financial advisor representing the township in the negotiations. We've since hired PFM to represent the township and assist in the negotiations to ensure that whatever the pricing ends up being, ultimately being on the day that we sell, that it's in line with similar sized and rated issues throughout, throughout the market on that day. So we've, we've put pieces in place to ensure that the, that Radnor's getting a good price on the day that we sell.
Yeah. I understand all of that, and I think you both are dancing around the point. Remember, this is an expensive bond issue because it's two, right? We have to pay, we have to duplicate a lot of, a lot of costs here because we have two bank qualified issues and 15 days apart. So we're paying extra for that. Suppose, hopefully, we're going to get, and you're justifying that we're going to get a lower interest rate, so it pays us to do that instead of going, you know, for the whole thing at once and not doing bank qualified. But typically, we set the underwriting discount at this point. Why, is it going to be $4 a bond, $5 a bond, or $7 or $10 a bond per thousand?
Well, right, I can address-
Do we have a not, do we have a not to exceed?
Yeah, the ordinance has a not to exceed. I think it's seven, 7.7.
We both say, we've got not to exceed, there's not to exceed in both. Series A and series B.
Not to exceed? Seven dollars per bond?
Yes.
So will it be less than that?
Yes. And we would have two, whether we, if we went to market on both issues. I mean, the fact that we're doing it in two issues, we would have underwriters' costs on both those no matter what.
Well, again, if we were doing a competitive bid, we might have substantially less than seven per bond.
And we might in this as well.
We might? Based on what? How's that going to, how's that work?
Based on the same thought process that you're having with the competitive market sale.
Well, it's not, it's not competitive, though. It's negotiated. So there's no other, there's no other bankers that are coming in to, to, to help to motivate Banning and Scattergood to, to take lower fee, right? In other words, if they have, if they have to bid against other bankers, then that's a motivation. But if they're negotiating it, then they're likely to be very high to the not to exceed, right?
Except that in this case, we won't agree to the pricing unless PFM tells us that the pricing that we are getting is consistent with similarly sized issues on this, on the same day, or within the same time span where it makes sense. So we have PFM working on our behalf to ensure that the pricing is consistent with what we would have otherwise gotten had we gone to competitive market.
Okay. So how do you do that? What's the data you're looking at? For, and when do you set the underwriting discount, then? When did we agree to it? At the, after the, after the bonds are sold, or hours before, or how does it work?
It's not hours before. It's, it's days or a week before. We price many, many bond transactions similar to this one for similarly rated credits on a bank qualified basis all throughout the Commonwealth every week. We've got a lot of data points to reference to make sure that the sale that occurs for the township for these transactions fits in with those and is sold on a competitive basis, small c competitive basis with those, and that it looks the way it should look for a township, a bond sale this size, being issued that, at that time of the year, that time in the calendar, with this rating, with this structure. There's data points out there to, for us as the independent financial advisor to make sure that the pricing is where the township should be.
Okay, I'm going to call you guys that date so we can talk about it, right? Make sure.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Is there any other commissioner comment to the motion on the floor? Any staff comment? Is there any public comment? All right. All those in favor of adopting ordinance 2019-07, authorizing the incurrence of the Township of Radnor of non electoral debt by the issuance of general obligation bonds, please indicate by saying aye.
This is a roll call, right?
This is a roll call.
No, it is not a roll call vote, gentlemen. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes six to nothing with Commissioner Clark absent. Is not a roll call vote. I already checked this out with Mr. Rice. Thank you very much for your assistance. I appreciate it. Item C, sanitary sewer system evaluation by Gannett Fleming. Roger, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. As, as you know, we've been working on a township-wide sanitary sewer assessment for the township. What that basically entailed was a, a development of an asset list, which is determining how much pipe you actually have in the township, and then utilizing different methods to, to develop the condition of that assessment. So we used township records, talked to Public Works, talked to, to staff, went through a ton of old files to try to get, to develop this asset list. And what, what the township has is, as you see here, 142 miles of sewer pipe in the township with 3,900 manholes, four pumping stations, and almost 6,000 feet of force main. So that's been developed on, onto a map and onto numerous spreadsheets in order to track the data of what's there, the age of the pipe, and the subsequent conditions. So what we looked at when we looked at the asset-
Roger, real quick, before you leave that. So there's only about a mile of force main. Is that all King of Pressure Road, or is there other force main besides-
No, there's three other, there's three others. There's four pumping stations, and each pumping station has a force main associated with it. I believe roughly 2,700 feet is King of Pressure. Does that sound right, Steve? Somewhere around there?
That's correct.
Yeah. And the rest of that footage is for the other pumping, the other three ejector stations, they're called. So what we did is we looked at the, the assets based on their useful life expectancy. And there was, we used industry standards to go through that and develop that. We, we, like I said, we went through township records and to the best of our ability, we determined when most of the systems were, were constructed, utilizing house construction data, being the age of the property. There was really not a whole lot of township records with some of the older stuff, obviously, and there's no, no real plans to look at that. So this is the criteria that was, that was used. Primarily, most of the pipe in the township is vertified clay or asbestos cement. Some of the newer pipe, being under 20 years old, is PVC. There's some ductile iron, but for the most part, it's the asbestos cement or vertifrag clay. So assets exceeding their useful life in the township is about 46% of the pipelines in the township are over 50 years old. Some are pushing 100 years old. It's about 345,000 feet, about half of the manholes, a lot of them are brick, and they deteriorate over time. About half of the manholes, a lot of them are brick, and they deteriorate over time. The four pumping stations also have exceeded their useful life and a portion of the force main. The reason that all of the force main pipe is not over is because you did the repairs and the replacement of the King of Pressure force main a couple of years ago. So, these are the four pumping stations in the township. King of Pressure pump station is the biggest one. The other three stations are small pneumatic ejector stations, which is extremely old technology. And from what records that we could find, they're all 40-plus years old. And like I said, it's very old, inefficient technology. So, the recommendation being that they all be considered for replacement. So, here's the replacement costs that were developed for all of the assets that are over their life expectancy, which is a total of about $49 million. Now, when I say that something's exceeding its useful life of 50 years, it doesn't mean 50 years and a day that pipe's gonna collapse. Could collapse before 50 years, could last substantially longer than that. But for good planning process, you really don't wanna push it. You've seen a number of times in the township here, you've already had sewer breaks and collapses on some of this pipe. So, it's prudent to go forward with the asset management plan utilizing those useful life numbers that were in that previous slide. Another technique that we're recommending is televisual inspection of the pipelines that haven't exceeded their useful life at this point. So, they would be under 50 years, over 20 years, because we're relatively certain that the pipe that's under 20 years is still in pretty good shape, and we're not really recommending that be looked at yet. This televisual inspection recommendation would be an ongoing process, and probably over a 10-year period, we would wanna see that the remaining 360,000 feet be investigated. And you do that on a rolling scale, and then you start over. So, if you can get your system TV'd every 10 years, you have a pretty good handle of the condition. There are additional repairs that can take place during this televisual inspection too with grouting if they find leaks or small structural cracks. So, the cost of this is about $905,000, again, over a 10-year period, so you're probably looking $90,000 or $100,000 a year to do that. This is based on a cost of $250 a lineal foot. That cost can vary based on where the pipe is, how accessible it is, but this is pretty much an industry standard look. There are several companies that are on Co-Stars that do this type of work where you really don't have to send it out to bid, you could just hire them off the state's list. So, Ian, if we can switch to the table? So, this is a map of the sewer system. I know it's not super clear to be able to see, but these shaded areas that are gray on the TV screen but they're pink in person here are the areas where the pipelines exceed their useful life. So, as this report continues, Mr. Mercini and I are gonna sit down and develop a plan as to where we go first. And what will be in this final version of the report will be an outline of where we wanna start and how soon we wanna progress. Like I said, this all doesn't have to be done next year, I'm not saying that all of these pipelines will be compromised, but should start looking at moving along with this and getting these taken care of. They're not gonna get better on their own. So, that's where we are. I plan on meeting with Mr. Mercini in the next week or so to go thoroughly through all of the appendices of this report and everything, and then we'll assemble the final report for you. Should have it in a few weeks. And it'll outline how this was determined, all the backup, all the cost estimate information, everything will be in that report.
Okay. Great, thank you. Thank you very much. So, just quickly, the map. What's the area that's shaded in red? What's the difference, like, between the white and the red shaded in red area?
The red is all the pipelines that are being recommended for replacement that have exceeded their useful life. So, all of that shaded area is stuff that we know is old. Most of it's 1930s, 1940s. That's primarily the oldest part of the system.
So, can you describe those areas that are exceeded useful life and that are shaded?
Describe them how?
Name streets and/or neighborhoods?
It's mostly, the whole northern part of the map, that's all north, north Wayne, south Wayne, west Wayne, and that area.
The lower portion is?
Is down below Bryn Mawr Ave.
That around Bryn Mawr Hospital or where exactly is that?
No, that's the southeast portion of the township.
I think that's my end of town.
Yes. Yes.
So, what's the cost per lineal foot to replace piping and how did you come to that number?
It varies by pipe size. Average on this is about $125 a foot. And in the final report, we'll have all that backup. So, some of these lines are eight-inch lines that are being replaced, some of them are up to 30-inch lines. So, obviously, the cost of a 30-inch line would be much more substantial than an eight-inch line.
And also, we would need to phase this in if we wanted to replace, what did you say it was, 49,000 lineal feet approximately?
It was 360-some thousand lineal feet.
360,000 lineal feet and-
345,000.
345,000, at basically 100 and 1/4 per foot. And we'll figure out, you know, as you say, it varies. But you'd have to phase that in anyway. You couldn't get that all done in three years, anyway.
Correct, correct.
And the force mains, we're talking about for King of Pressure Road, we would replace that pumping station, but the piping is all good, though.
Correct, correct.
And if we do spend the money, whatever the estimate is, 100, 125, whatever, the system would be usable and intact for 50 years.
That's the theory, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. We'll wait for the final report. All right, onto item D, Ordinance 2019-09 Introduction, Amending the Code of the Township of Radnor, Chapter 270, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 270-16, Stop Intersections Concerning the Intersection on Farm Road and Windsor Avenue. Lieutenant Pinto.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a request for a stop sign on Farm Road at the intersection of Windsor Avenue. This was a stop sign that was approved at the staff traffic meeting on May 15, 2019, back when the codification was originally done. The stop sign at this intersection was already approved, and for whatever reason, it was missed, it was not put in, and we were just trying to move forward with that initial codification and put the stop sign in where it was originally approved to be.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve Ordinance 2019-09?
This is, I believe, just an introduction?
Sorry, a motion to introduce. I'm sorry, I apologize. Can I get a motion to introduce? You don't wanna introduce this? They hate it? Okay. No motion to introduce Ordinance 2019-09? All right. Then the motion does not go forward. There is no motion. Okay, onto item E. Hearing Regarding the Intermunicipal Transfer of a Liquor License to Pizzeria Grill, 958 County Line Road in Bryn Mawr. Mr. Kachansky.
This is application's front of you. There's a new liquor license that's being proposed to be brought into the township. The applicant and their attorney are here to make that presentation to you as part of the hearing.
Very good. Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for being here, and thank you for waiting.
Good evening and thank you. My name is George Brosman. I'm an attorney. I represent the applicant, which is By-Sal Roman numeral four, Inc. With me this evening is Sal Karenante. He is the principal of that entity, and he operates the Pizzeria Grill at 958 Haverford Road. Seated next to Sal is Sal Gambon, Sr. He's Sal Karenante's real estate broker who specializes in liquor licenses, has many decades of experience in that. As Mr. Kachansky noted, we're here for a public hearing, which is required under the state liquor laws to make an intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license. The license in question is a restaurant license, and Mr. Karenante would like to have that at his Pizzeria Grill. As you may know, that is a local business here in Radnor Township. The property, as I mentioned, is at 958 County Line Road. It happens to be Zone C1 Commercial District. If you've been into the restaurant, they offer specialty and gourmet pizzas, Italian food, things like that. They do have seating there. You can stay there and eat your meal, and you can also take out. I'm just gonna present this and have Mr. Karenante sworn in to confirm what I'm saying is correct. We're available to answer questions. Mr. Karenante has received comments from customers that they wish that he would offer beer and wine. In today's competitive restaurant environment, especially in this area, he feels that it will help his business to be able to offer that to his customers. It's a fairly straightforward application, I believe. There's no renovations proposed to the restaurant to facilitate this, and there's no changes that he's proposing in his operations other than to offer this amenity. There's no changes in hours of operation, which are Monday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. I do have some exhibits I could hand out, if that's okay.
How can they stock all the new product without changing the facility?
I think Mr. Karenante can address that. I said there would be no renovations that would need a building permit. He may have to add a refrigerator, but he could address that. I could bring him up to answer that. Just to go through this, A1 is a copy of the application we filed. It does include a plot plan of the site, the interior floor plan, and a menu, which essentially will not change. There's a deed to the property, Mr. Karenante, through By-Sal Four leases that business, and A3 is his lease assignment agreement. A4, I'll put up here, I don't know if the screen could come on. I know most are probably familiar with this location, but I just have three photos. This is a sign on the property, 958 County Line. You can see the Pizzeria Grill there. I made it upside down. This is the front of the building. There's Rita's there as well. And then this is the rear of the building. There's quite a few parking spaces on the property, both in the front and the rear. I would just ask my client, Sal Karenante, to be sworn in and ask him to confirm what I said was correct. Could you come up, Sal? John, do you swear? Do you wanna have the witness sworn in? Okay. This is Sal Karenante. He operates the Pizzeria Grill. Mr. Karenante, did you hear the presentation?
Yes.
Is everything that I said accurate?
Everything is correct, yes.
Sure.
Yes, everything is correct.
Mr. Booker had a question. Would you mind repeating that?
Mr. Karenante, you have submitted to the board that you will have no renovations if this is approved. How can you stock beer and wine? And is there liquor or is it just beer and wine?
We're gonna just add a refrigerator, and then we have a liquor stop room in the back.
So, you're going to stock the beer? So, first of all, is this, I'm sorry, did it cover spirits or is it just, it'll cover all, wine, beer, and spirits?
The license is for that. His plan is-
Right, but you're just gonna use it for beer and wine?
Yes.
And you'll store it, you won't store it, you won't need to make any changes to store it? No coolers, no refriger-
No, just coolers, just coolers.
And my understanding of it, and I guess you don't need to respond to this, but these are pretty expensive licenses, and so, want to take you a long time to recover the money by additional sales? In other words, if this is just, if you're gonna pay $250,000 or something for a license, won't it take you 100 years to make your money back selling beer?
We already do good, like, in the business. Like, just like for taking the customer that asks for the glass of wine and the beer, that's why, like, when they eat it, you know?
You know, technically, we wanna answer your question, Mr. Booker, but I don't-
I said you don't have to answer it, but that's my question is, you know?
Well, it's not relevant, so I would say respectfully, we would wanna-
Well, I have to make a determination whether this is in the health, if this is detrimental to the health or general welfare of the constituents. And if it's, it seems like the rational economic actor would wanna make their money out of this, so I'm concerned that there's more to this than I'm seeing than just being able to offer. It's very expensive to offer this slight amenity to people who might wanna do it.
Well, as I said, you know, and Sal Gambon is here, he has experience with this. It's a competitive environment. Mr. Karenante is a local businessman. He wants to remain viable. A lot of businesses in the area offer this, and he doesn't wanna lose business. He wants to remain viable. I think he should be commended for being in the township and trying to keep his business viable, so I don't, the testimony is the testimony. He doesn't need to change his operations. A lot of people do this. It's essentially an amenity he's going to be offering, and if he happens to make a little extra money, that would be nice.
Well, that's my point, is that it seems to me that for the expense of this, that you would wanna guarantee you'd make substantially more in order to cover the cost, right?
Can I just jump in there real quick? So, I don't see that as an issue, 'cause if the license is worth $250,000 now, it'll probably be worth $250,000 when he sells it. I don't know how much is the license. More? Down? What's the license? A hundred? But, all right, so, like I said, I don't think that's irrelevant.
We'd like to not get into that.
All right, so-
I'd like to answer his question, if I could.
Please.
When you throw the number of $250,000 out, not in Delaware County-
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
Because the liquor license is being sold for $150,000, and Sal has other businesses, and he can afford the $150,000. He doesn't have to force beer out there to be able to make money on it. His present food business is excellent, but many of his customers have requested, they like to have pizza with beer and with sandwiches and with Italian food, some wine. And he feels as though he has a nice location, he has a very good business, so he contacted me and said, "Could you find me a liquor license?" And I did, but it's only $150,000. That's all he wants to do.
Right, but you understand my point. In other words, I mean, that's still a big expenditure, and you would hope, as a rational economic actor, you wanna make that worth your time.
Oh, yes, well, there's very high profit in that. And the fact is that he sells a lot of food already, and he has a good clientele, and the people coming in will order a beer or glass of wine. And the thing is, he'll add new customers that come in because now that they can get their beer or glass of wine with their meal, they'll come in. So, he knows he'll have increased new clients, plus the people that are already there. But he can afford to put the money out and just pay cash for a license, so he's not gonna be borrowing heavy so that he has to push a lot of beer out in order to make a profit.
Thank you for that. And currently, is it BYOB currently?
Yes.
And I would submit to you, it's already BYOB. People can consume alcohol there. This is not the type of location- is not the type of location that there's going to be a problem with the hours that he has. There's really no secret agenda here, Rich. It's a local businessman, and he has to keep his business viable.
You might think I have some secret agenda. You don't be paranoid. I don't have a secret agenda.
Commissioner Farhi has...
Isn't this near...this is near Villanova, right?
You said there might be more than you thought.
Yeah, is there...is there a lot of Villanova students that go to this?
Commissioner Farhi has a question.
I just have like three real quick questions. One is about the college students. And, you know, Garrett Hill Pizza had a license for a while. They're no longer in business. Across the street, Yang Ming, they have a liquor license as well. Are you planning on selling a lot of six...so you're allowed...you have the right to sell hard alcohol, but as of now, it will not be on your menu. Is that correct? It's only for beer and wine? Okay. So obviously, you have a lot of the college students, like what Rich said, across the street. Are you going to be having a large variety of six-pack sales, or is that not necessary? Okay. Because there are college kids there, and I look at that parking lot, it can be a little tricky in getting in and out. So that is...it's a little bit of a concern for me. The other thing I'm just concerned or interested is, how are you going to check IDs? Do you have a swipe? Is there a...or is it just done manually?
Yes, we're going to have the swipe and like the little check the ID.
So everyone, everyone is going to get swiped? Yeah, same thing like Giant? Okay.
And Mr. Gambon may be able to address it, but I understand there's mandatory training and education required to a licensee to enforce all of the rules, and the last thing he wants to do after making an investment like this is to get into trouble with his business for that type of thing. And as to the college students, I'm sure it is close. I'm sure the Villanova students go to all the businesses in the area. With the hours and the type of operation it is, it's not going to become a college bar, a magnet for...
I don't see it as a full-service bar. You have a beer, a glass of wine, maybe two with your dinner, and then that's it.
Right, exactly.
Mr. Brosman, would your client be willing to accept that we condition our approval on it only being beer and wine?
Do you understand the question?
We don't.
He says yes.
Thank you. I'd like to make that motion that we include that in any approval.
Second.
Okay, do we need to vote on that? Is it...I mean, are we...
It's a condition.
The...that would be a condition. The other conditions, and the last one that you did was for the...well, you did one for Giant, but the Charcuterie LLC, Cornerstone Property, you approved, was the last liquor license that you approved. So the conditions there had to do with, and I don't think there's any outdoor seating here, correct, George?
Correct.
But if there would be, you'd have to comply with the township's code. No amplified music, no outside amplified music. And then if this would be transferred again within the township, they would have to come back to the township to get that approved. So there are the conditions that you've attached to all of these. That would be a fourth condition that John just mentioned there. Because what'll have to happen is, once you vote on this, approval with the conditions, and I've got to prepare a written resolution for the board's signature that they have to send to the LCB. So I don't know if there's any other conditions that...
John, do you know off the top of your head if we have the authority to restrict what kinds of alcohol they can sell? I know we can say you have to comply with all of our existing ordinances and that kind of thing, but...
What kinds?
I mean, if we're saying you can't sell hard liquor, we're essentially restricting the liquor license that they're purchasing.
If they agree to it, we can do that.
So then it's not a condition, then? It's an agree...they have to agree to it?
Well, it's a condition. It'll be in the resolution, and...
All right, so that counts as an agreement in your...
Yeah.
John and George, we've had to...we've approved in my few years. We got so many of these lately. LPQ, Le Pen Quartet, I guess, Arde, Giant, Quarterstone, Teresa's. It goes on and on. We're bringing in all these liquor licenses from all over the county to Radnor. When is enough enough? When is too many? How many more liquor outlets do we need in this township?
Well, I can't answer that, but as to this application, I think you need to make a determination. Will it cause an undue impact on the public health, safety, and welfare? And I do not believe it will, based on the testimony we've given you. If you want a personal opinion, I think it's a good amenity to have. It's not causing a problem to have a local businessman be able to satisfy the needs of his customers. I think it's a nice thing to be able to get, you know, a beverage, an adult beverage, if you will, with your meal. So I don't see it as a bad thing. I think the law put in the protection to have a hearing like this, so you can check each one to see if there's anything special. And he will also have to go to the Liquor Control Board and have a similar proceeding. So I submit to you that the law is in place to take care of that, and this application is not the one to tip the scales and make Radnor have trouble with alcohol.
When is the one? How many do we need? So others of us would disagree that the rampant use of alcohol in Radnor is not a good thing, and that every restaurant need not be...serve alcohol. And with the amount, as I just rattled off just a few since I've been on the board, there...I believe we are importing too many liquor licenses into Radnor, and that it is not conducive to a healthy family environment, and it is not in the general well...the best interests and general welfare of the constituents.
I can't answer that. I'm here on this particular application. I do know that many bars have closed over the years that were problematic in the area, including in Radnor, and this is the type of a...it's a local family-owned business, small business. It's a restaurant. It's not a problem bar, so I don't see the sky as falling, and, you know, we're here about this application, and does it cause a problem? That's a bigger policy issue that you'll have to confront.
If you restrict that license, is it just for that property, or how does it...if you change names, if you change ownership, when could he be allowed to serve hard liquor? If he sells it to another place in Radnor, would he be allowed to...
They'd have to come back in front of us.
Yeah, they have to.
That's one of the conditions.
That's a condition. So you're putting condition on this license?
Right.
So if it's sold outside of Radnor, would they still have to...would then...it doesn't matter. It's only in Radnor?
What if he changed...converts from a corporation to an LLC? Would that trigger it or not, and maintains the same ownership? Right now, this is By Sal four, Inc. Say he converted it to an LLC, would that remove that condition?
No, no. It stays with the real estate, and it's really going to be an issue of whether or not the state would require him to...would that be a transfer within the township or not? If it's the same basic entity, different name, it's not going to remove that condition. I mean, the written resolution from the township will go to the state, and the state will incorporate that into their licensing requirements. They can't finalize this until the state gets township approval. So whatever conditions you attach are going to go to, and the state's going to incorporate them.
One more, just to flesh this out. If...and I don't know the answer to this. If Sal is currently the sole owner of the corporation, he converts to a partnership and adds a partner or two, would that terminate the condition?
No.
Why not? It's a new ownership.
But it's...this attaches to the real estate.
Would they need to come back to us to do that?
I don't believe so. They come back if there's an attempt to transfer this license, which is assigned to this location. The state approves the location to somewhere else in the township, some other address in the township. It would have to come back here.
I would think that if it changed the ownership from sole owner to a partnership, that that would trigger that need to come back to the township.
Can you, for beer, you deliver pizza? You have a...you can't deliver beer.
I want to deliver.
But is that legal, or you can't do it?
I don't know. I think it's going to become legal soon. But I don't want to get involved with that.
Okay. And then the other thing, too, is I would vote no to restrict your license to hard alcohol. I see you as a family restaurant, very similar to like Manila's Diner. I don't think they do a lot, but to restrict an asset that you're buying, I don't think that the township should be doing that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? All right, is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? All right. So we just need to approve this. We don't...do we need to vote?
We have to condition, right?
It would be a motion.
With the conditions. So we've got...
Let me just lay out the motion and the conditions that we were...that the board has been discussing. First of all, that any outdoor seating would have to comply with the township's existing codes and regulations. Two, that there's no outside amplified music. Three, that the applicant obtained written approval of the township prior to transfer the license to another location. And four, that only beer and wine be served at the property.
Okay. Jake, do you have a comment?
Yeah, can we vote on that fourth condition?
Yeah.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Sean on this, that I don't want to...I don't think we should be restricting the applicant's right to what they sell.
Well, I'd just point out, that purpose of that condition is what Rich has been talking about, the effect of alcohol in the neighborhoods. So the risk, if you will, that we're trying to manage is greatly reduced by limiting their license.
And you could look at every other bar that has...that serves hard alcohol.
And we have every time one of those licenses has come in front of us. So we're not being inconsistent at all.
Well...
Just like Rich and I will probably vote against it, because we vote against all of them.
I just think that he's...I don't know what that does to your license if you sell that in Radnor, but you're taking a big...
It doesn't affect that. Doesn't LPQ...LPQ is only beer and wine, right? Yeah.
He's taking a haircut if he tries to sell it.
He sells it, in fact, and reverts the whole.
But unless it's done in Radnor. Sure.
Right. And if he sells it in Radnor and it comes back to us, then they could say, "Oh, we want to..."This is going to be sold to a bar, and we want to remove that restriction." We can consider it then.
But I don't think it's for us to start putting limitations. He's buying it. He wants to sell hard alcohol. John, I agree with you. I don't want to see that place sell any kind of hard alcohol, especially it's close to the college. I get it. But, you know, it's not for us to tell him what he should do.
Oh, it is to us. It's our right to do it.
Okay, all right.
Do we need...should we vote on this, or are we just looking for consensus?
Well, I think you need to vote on it, but it sounds like you should vote on the no hard liquor condition first.
All right.
And see if that passes, and then the remaining conditions.
Could I just ask for a clarification? If...I don't know how it would be worded, but I wouldn't want it to be construed to say, "There's other things besides beer," like, I don't know if I'm using the proper term, but a malt beverage. We want it to be clear that he could do that. You know, I think it's hard liquor that the people that are talking about that restriction are concerned about. So if it just wouldn't...we would prefer not to have the restriction. My client said he's okay with it, but if they were going to have a restriction, I would just want it to be clear that it was only limiting the spirits, if you will, because there are other products. They're like beer malt beverages.
Yeah, John can find the right words.
Yeah, it's fine.
All right, so I will first call the vote on the motion to add the condition of no hard liquor or no spirits.
Spirits, right.
To this license. So all those in favor of that condition, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Nay. Okay, motion fails four to two. So...
So the next portion of it, though, is outdoor. So we don't have any outdoor seating in the mall here, and we don't plan to. Do we need to restrict that, or...
Well, it's...if they want to propose outdoor seating, they just have to do it in compliance with the township's regulations. The township already regulates that, and there's a prohibition against outside amplified music. That would be the other condition. And then any transfer in the township would come back. Those are the three other conditions that you've attached to every one of these that have come before you.
So it would be prudent, then, to put in those outdoor restrictions in the event that at some point in the future, they seek and obtain approval for outdoor dining?
That should be part of the motion, approving the request.
All right.
Is your sidewalk big enough? Sorry, Lisa. Is the sidewalk big enough for outdoor dining? Okay, then I don't necessarily know that that's even relevant.
All right, so I will entertain...so I need to make a motion. We need to make a motion to approve the intermunicipal transfer of the liquor license to Pizzerella Grill with the conditions that outdoor seating would comply with our current township regulations. No outdoor music as...or amplified music in compliance with township regulations. And then the transfer, if there are licenses to be transferred, they would need to come back to us in order to get approval for that.
Correct.
So I will entertain a motion of that nature. I need a second, please. Okay. Do we need any additional discussion? Okay, and I've called for staff. Anything from the public? All right, then I will call the vote. All those in favor of the intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license to Pizzerella Grill with the conditions as noted, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes four to two with Commissioner Clark absent. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And your menu makes me hungry, hungrier than I already am. Thank you very much.
I go there often. Their food's good.
Really?
Yeah.
I might even go right there right now. Okay, item F. Ordinance 2019-09. Adoption. Amending the General Code of the Township of Radnor, Chapter 250, Article 6, Street Excavations, Section 250.26. Backfilling and paving to require Permit E2. Backfill, restore, and repair excavations and establishing standards for such work. Mr. Norsini?
Thank you, Madam President. So this was before the board at the previous regularly scheduled meeting. This is to make the requirements more stringent, so that we would have less patches on the road. The crux of it is that if there's two patches within 500 feet, they have to mill and overlay that lane, plus some other items on backfilling. But that's the crux of it. The rest of the ordinance stays the same. As far as when the long trenches go, they have to mill and pave those lanes. But that is what is before you for adoption, hopefully, tonight.
All right, can I get a motion to adopt this ordinance, 2019-09? All right, any commissioner comment?
Is this the Miller Brothers amendment, or is this the Pico amendment? What do you call this amendment?
We call this the General Code of the Township Amendment. This is...anybody who does utility work, whether it be Pico, Verizon, Aqua PA, anybody who trenches in township streets would follow this.
And how are you going to make sure everybody's aware of this?
If this passes tonight, we will be sending this out to those exact firms I just mentioned, Verizon, Pico, and Aqua. Verizon Electric and Verizon Gas, they will both get that. And we will send that out this week if this passes.
We tell them that they have a chance to come and comment on this?
I think verbally, some of them know. Surrounding townships are doing the same thing. I know the township next door also passed something, actually, I think maybe a little more stringent than this. But there was no official notification, but they will get that if the board passes it.
It's the penalty, if that, for noncompliance. What's our recourse?
So we issue a permit. There is teeth within that in this ordinance to address that, that we can go in and do the work and go after them for the money. But all these utilities have huge capital plans. The big issue is, we won't let you work unless you're doing, you know, emergency work. We just won't issue permits for you.
It's kind of like cutting our nose off to spite our face if you don't let them go in there to make upgrades and whatnot.
Well, we would hold that until they come into compliance. We wouldn't take that away. We'd say, "And I've done it in the past. Fix this, and then you can continue working."
I just feel that if we do this, it's kind of like the wire issue that we have going around. It's a great idea, but I think enforcement...I'm not against it, but I think enforcement is going to be the $64,000 question, if you may, on making...it's great to have teeth, but if it's unenforceable, it just looks good on paper.
It's enforceable, Commissioner.
Any other comment?
Yeah, I'm going to vote, I'm going to support this. Steve, appreciate the work you've done on this. You know, I'm sure we all have the same issues, but let me come take a tour through the sixth ward, and we've got checkerboard patterns all throughout our streets, and it's uneven. It creates bigger potholes, and I think this is one way to address this, and I think it's a good step forward.
Okay, any other comment? Is there any staff comment to the motion on the floor?
Madam President, if I may, I just want to ask the board to support this. This is a good move, and as Commissioner Abel spoke about, one of his streets there was like a checkerboard, and I think there's a lot of work that is done within those areas that the road that is not covered, there's damage that is done. So, I think the obligation to the utility to protect the taxpayers' dollars is the right way to, the right way to go on this.
Okay, any, any other staff comment? Is there any public comment to the motion on the floor? All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of adopting ordinance 2019-09, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes six to nothing with Commissioner Clark absent. All right, final item, item G, discussions on proposed lighting and noise ordinances. I requested this be added. We had stated at the meeting, I believe back in June, beginning of June, when we discussed the Villanova lights, that we would, the residents had asked that we look at the lighting ordinance. We had had one prior, or had a sample prior, which we had sent to the planning commission, which the planning commission decided, I think, was too onerous or too broad. Thank you. And did not do anything with it, have kind of sent it back to us, although, Mr. Rice, I don't know, you mentioned that the planning commission had mentioned that perhaps they would be wanting to take this up again?
There was some comment at the last planning commission meeting that Mary Everly had mentioned to me that, that this would come back to the planning commission, that they needed to go back to it. So, there's some recognition, I think, that there's work to be done on this. What you have is some of the review that was already done by some members of the planning commission. I think Mr. Golis did a nice job putting a lot of the information together, and then some samples. So, I mean, it may be that you have a, instead of meeting once a month and trying to work through something like this, maybe like a subcommittee or something would make some sense. Planning commission members, commissioner members, staff, whatever the board would want to do, and then that group can meet. Because this really is going through the code in a detailed fashion, which is tough to do when you're only meeting once a month. So, I suggested that, well, Mary suggested that. I don't know that she's discussed that with the planning commission since they just met last week, I guess. But there's a lot of, you have a lot of existing provisions that are spread throughout the code, but you don't have anything that's consolidated like a, like a specific lighting ordinance. And that would be the goal, I think, to try to pull it all together so it was in one spot.
So, in the spirit of all the work we've done as a board on the, with our finance committee meetings, you know, I think that it, when there are opportunities, and especially for us to collaborate, I think, with some of our, our boards and commissions, to get things done in a, you know, a smaller group setting where it's not as, you know, where we don't have as much business, and that's the only thing we can focus on. Because I think this, the lighting ordinance is going to need some significant focus, and the noise ordinance as well. I would like to propose something similar. I know, you know, I've had people since I was, since I was sworn in, people who've had concerns and complaints around noise and the noise ordinance, and they'd like to see it maybe have a little more teeth to it. So, you know, I think that's something that we can look up, and I think that sometimes these meetings, so I think it would be beneficial for us to form such a committee with planning commission members and commissioner representatives, so we can put something together that when they go to the respective boards, they at least have input and endorsement of some members. So, I put that out there for my fellow commissioners to consider.
So, I think Roberta did a great job when she had her lighting ordinance. I would like, if there's, I don't know if it's an issue of money in the budget or not, but I know Sam Stube was excellent. So, contacting them, getting input from outside experts, if they want to do it for free, I think that'd be the most ideal. But hiring some experts and getting a third party, real expert opinion, not just our committee people, but having true experts, I think that would be helpful.
Well, if you want to hire an expert, then we're going to have to get cost estimates, and we'll have to approve that.
I think it's better that you do it right the first time than you keep having to come back, and it's, we're trying to do Laura Marion, we're trying to do TE. This is what they do out in Lancaster. So, to have some experts to, you know, to funnel it down, so you do it once, and you're not spinning your wheels for what, maybe years? So, I think that makes sense.
I made the comment to Sean, this is going to take years. But I think that what was proposed, if you're going to set up a committee and go through the ordinance and try to pick every reference point, and then draft something that's going to reflect all of the suggestions from the many different interest groups, you do need to have a consultant that's going to sit with that committee, and you're, you're making this a year, you know, it's months and months or years' process. But if you're going to have a committee, I think you need to have somebody who's an expert. It can't, you would want to have somebody other than just laypeople.
Well, there's, there's experts, such as the gentleman that was here with Villanova, that design and construct the lights, and then there's experts that draft ordinances. So, you got two categories of people there.
No, I would talk about engineering, engineers...
They're not going to draft you an ordinance, in most cases.
No, but they would consult on going through the ordinance with, with the committee, and you wouldn't want to have a manufacturer's representative. You know, that would be the last person.
Yeah. And you'd have someone like Mr. Stube, or someone that, that has his skill set and is not a for-profit, buy our product entity, and I think that would make the most sense.
Or why not just shortcut it, and let's, let's get a, it just seems like a laborious process. Can't we just draft something and, and go get a couple revisions and vote on it? Why, why does it need to be a committee?
Well, that's what we had before, and it, it wasn't, I mean, apparently, what Matt Golis did do, some markup to the one that we sent, then I guess planning kind of set it aside, or, I mean, we could certainly wait for planning to take it up again, or, I mean, why does it have to take months and years? I mean, it, it seems to me that we're our own worst enemy when it comes to trying to get anything done sometimes. So, as you say, like, why don't we form this group, and we say, I mean, I, I think that we should have something put together by October, and maybe vote on it by October. We are concerned around, you know, lighting with, you know, new businesses coming in, whatever's going to happen with Wawa, we've got Villanova with their new lights. I mean, why wouldn't we work on something that, and have it in place quickly? Why does it have to take years?
I don't think that it has to take years. My, my concern is that you have just people that aren't true experts on this. They have a good idea, and then how does it mesh? What I would like to, and each township is different.
The people who live in the community are the experts.
No, but each, no, each township is different, and it has its own entities, its own entities and its own, you know, intricacies. And my concern is that you have someone that's done this and knows the process and has a blueprint, as opposed to trying to, well, we, we know a little bit about this, and you're trying to get a blueprint on the fly. I, I would feel, I just think that you're just spinning your wheels. Get a true expert, you have, we get them in all the time consultants when it comes to traffic. I don't know why lighting would be any different. It's a health, it's a, it's a health concern.
That expert would have to still work with a group.
Sure, that's fine.
It ultimately becomes what the township wants, not what an expert tells us we need.
Well, I think an expert can certainly steer, because there's maybe, you know, we may not know what we don't know. And the technology is changing, different townships and entities, they have, their ordinance is changing, so, you know, they, they have their finger on the pulse when it comes to this. That's all I'm saying.
What about our...
It's their full-time job.
Our own staff as well.
Seems to me we should just refer it back to planning, ask them to form a subcommittee. I don't think we need a major rewrite of our lighting ordinances. We need tweaking. We need to address the new technologies, especially LEDs. We had added dark sky for Villanova, for the CICD, we should incorporate that into the ordinance. And I, I think they form a subcommittee and get it done in a month.
I support John's suggestion, and, you know, we ask planning committee to look at this, and then when they have a chance, we, we take their suggestions. I don't know that we should have a subcommittee of this board with members of the planning committee. I'd prefer the committee, the planning committee address this, and then we look at their suggestions.
And, and on the noise, we have the noise, we have ordinance for the noise, right?
We do, but it does not have teeth to it. There are things that fall through the cracks when it comes to the noise ordinance, things that we've tried to, that residents have had concerns about that are not addressed, and there's no way to address those.
Well, our current noise ordinance has no standards. It doesn't have numbers. It's subjective.
But it does, it does require that nobody use the blowers or the motors before 7:30 and, in the morning, and then it shuts them down in the evenings. And also, on Sunday, you're not even allowed to use anything, which people violate that, I know, but...
No, that's only construction.
Madam President, if I may...
No, decibels, you're right, it's not decibel.
I think for that, for the noise, I think adding a standard, using the OSHA standard of where the decibels are at, and then that way with the police or whomever can use a meter and actually measure it. And I think that's something we had talked about under one, after one of the construction projects, to use the OSHA standard for decibel readings that actually we can measure off of. That, John is correct, that's the only thing that I believe is missing.
You, you have in a township ordinance, a decibel level, it might be 50 is probably the lowest DBA at a property line where you take the measurement. In a residential district, if you have a industrial, commercial district, it may be 60, it may be something more than that, but you measure it at a property line on the property that's being affected by the noise or where there's been a complaint. Someone has to have a meter to do that, and then there's a process that you, you can go through that. You don't have anything like that. Right now, it's subjective. One person may hear a noise, and it may disturb them, and the next person, not a big deal, not a problem with that noise, that level of noise. So, it's a difficult, we've had a couple of these cases, we've had some dog parking situations. It's difficult to enforce it and to get compliance. So, that's the main thing, picking the decibel levels and then the procedure to bring people into compliance and to address it. That's a fairly straightforward, probably amendment to your existing noise ordinance, but, you know, there's some other exceptions in there that probably need to be clarified. Now, I have a series of noise ordinances. I did not send those around for tonight. I can send those around after tonight for the board to take a look at, and we can start looking at some proposed revisions to what you have on the books now. Staff could do that.
And we'll consult with, with Superintendent Blanigan, because he and I met with some residents who have some concerns. I know he had had some thoughts around that as well.
Yeah, it, it's, it becomes, once you have the standard, then you have that, but you still have to have the training and the meters that you, you know, to take the measurements, and that has to be clear who's, who's in that role. Is that the police department, is that some other department? But that's something we could start working on now, I, I would think. I mean, we have been doing that intermittently, off and on. I actually sent a noise ordinance, probably circulated four or five years ago. And, you know, we can go back to some version of that and then bring something back to the board.
Okay.
And we'll have police involved.
So, you guys will work on the noise ordinance and bring that back to us? And then for planning, so I'm fine, you know, kicking it to planning. So, have them revisit this? Can they revisit it, the lighting, I'm sorry, the revisit it and report back, so can they revisit it at their August meeting and report back to us in August? I mean, I don't want this to be something that, you know, kind of doesn't make it onto their agenda, or it keeps getting pushed back.
I think Steve sets the planning commission agenda, so, you know, Steve should probably put discussion of lighting ordinance on the planning commission agenda. I know that there was some discussion at the last meeting, because when I was putting the info together, some of it I got from Mary. She said it had come up, that there's an intent on the planning commission to go back and, and take another crack at, at a lighting ordinance. But if Steve puts that on the agenda, you know, then they can pick it up from there.
Okay. Do, is there consensus to send the lighting ordinance back to planning and ask them to bring something forward, or form a subcommittee and bring something forward, but within a reasonable amount of time, not, you know? Is there consensus for that?
Yeah, yes, there is consensus.
I hear consensus on this side. Do I have consensus over here?
Yeah, just have them do a subcommittee and put something together. I watched that whole meeting where they reviewed the draft ordinance, and they really equivocated on what they needed to do, and, and that was, how many months ago was that? It was at least six months ago when they looked at it.
Yeah, it was a long time ago.
So, they, I think time is of the essence is a, is a key element.
I would just like them maybe to reach out to Roberta or Stan Stube, and try to just maybe toss it around, get some ideas from him. But yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right, so we have consensus to send it back to planning. All right, reports, standing committees of the board. Do we have any reports? Any new business?
One item of new business, we had a power outage, like a lot of places, on, on last Thursday night, I think it was. A tree fell down by Radnor Elementary School, and there is, it still remains a very low wire over King of Pressure Road with some plastic on it. So, if, I don't know if that is, it looked like electric wire, because there's electric box, but I don't know if that was a result of that fall, or if that's something new. I think it's been low, and now it's lower. So, if you could dispatch that to the guys to make King of Pressure Road have that raised.
Will do.
Any other new business? Is there any old business? All right, then I will call for public participation. Do we have any public comment?
Good evening, Roberta Winters, 326 Williams Road. I just want to commend the board for supporting the community in their efforts to have the solicitor appear before the zoning hearing board. And I would also like to commend the commissioners for bringing up the light and noise ordinances, and reinforce also what Mr. Farhi said, because they did, the Outdoor Lighting Council does have people who will go through all the ordinances and make suggestions. Again, you don't have to use them, but it's free, and from what I understood from their presentation, that lighting issues are not really just in one place, but sometimes they're scattered throughout various ordinances and zoning rules and regulations. And so, it's not as simple as it looks on the books. And that's just basically from what I heard. I'm no expert, but I think if you look at the presentation that was done, which you can find on demand, you may get some further insights on that. And maybe the zoning, the planning board would like to have that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta. If you have that contact information, maybe you could forward it to Mr. Zankowski, and if the planning commission is, you know, it's something, a resource they'd like to seek out, that'd be great. Any more public comment this evening? All right, then I will call for a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Good evening, thank you all very much. Thank you all very much.